Good evening and welcome to the very first candidate forum sponsored by Future Winchester. My name is Steve Boxansky and I'll be your host for tonight's discussion. I first would like to take this opportunity to thank the folks at Future Winchester for putting these forums on. I'd like to thank all the residents who helped participate in compiling questions for our candidates tonight. And of course, I'd love to thank the team here at WinCam for their cooperation, assistance, and patience as we embark on this new endeavor. They really are the last bastion of local news and we are very grateful for this opportunity. Future Winchester is a nonpartisan, not-for-profit organization that was established to promote awareness in Winchester's town government and encourage greater civic engagement. Future Winchester does not support or oppose any candidates for elected office, but is focused on the issues and decisions being made that will impact our town now and in the future. For more information, please visit Future Winchester's website at www.futurewinchester.com. In keeping with the mission of Future Winchester, we believe that more forums, public participation, and open dialogue are to the benefit of our residents. We are not trying to compete with other groups that hold similar forums, but hope to complement these existing and valued traditions through another voice. Simply, Future Winchester sees this as an opportunity to exercise our First Amendment rights under the U.S. Constitution and to inform our friends and neighbors about what is happening in our town and the community. We hope to bring a unique perspective and perhaps grab the attention of some residents who have typically shied away from local politics or other forums. And while we may not have all the candidates here with us tonight, I want to make sure that everyone knows that all candidates were invited to participate. Tonight, we have the pleasure and honor of speaking with two of the four candidates for the Board of Health. The Board of Health is responsible for the formulation and enforcement of rules and regulations affecting the environment and public health in Winchester. They act independently and are autonomous from the state-level Department of Public Health, but typically work in collaboration to help administer state policy and make decisions based on local needs. Most states have local boards of health in addition to the State Department of Public Health as we have here in the Commonwealth. In fact, there's only one state without a local health department, and I'll open it up to see if anyone wants to guess which state that might be. All right, it's Rhode Island. It's our neighbor to the south Rhode Island. It's the only state without a local health department. In Massachusetts, we have 351 cities and towns, and all of them have these boards. Healthcare policy has always been important to us in Massachusetts. In fact, Paul Rivera chaired the Board of Health in Boston in 1799, the first local health board in the state and country. Obviously, this board has gained a great deal of importance and attention since the onset of the pandemic. The board has had to analyze and digest state policy, data, and insights while listening to the community and managing the town through a variety of public health protocols, including but not limited to mask policy for children and for indoor spaces. We commend those who have been on the board for the past two years and thank them for their service. So let's get a little further into it now. On the ballot this year, there are two positions available for the Board of Health. One for a term of one year and another for a term of three years. Tonight, we have with us Jennifer Inferna. She is running for the three-year term. And Lauren Costello, who is running for a one-year term. I want to make it clear, and I'll try to repeat this, these two candidates are not running against each other. Welcome to the forum and thank you for your participation. At this time, I'd like to just go over some of the ground rules and so you and the viewers know what to expect. And first, I'd also like to stress that this forum is a vehicle for greater awareness, engagement, and education. We want this to be informative, fun, and stress-free. We are not looking to catch our candidates in gotcha moments or to pigeonhole anyone into certain positions. We see this as an opportunity for you to share a little bit about yourselves and why you want to be elected to the Board of Health. So I encourage our guests to be themselves, be candid, and let's have a conversation. To begin, each candidate will have one minute to introduce themselves to the community, a little bit about their background and personal story, and then each candidate will have a few minutes to explain their perspective on the role of the Board of Health, explain their priorities for the short and long term, and really tell us why they're running. From there, we'll run through as many questions as we have time for, and we'll provide each of you two minutes to respond to each question. So without further delay, let's turn things over to Jennifer Inferna for a little bit of her background. Take it away, Jennifer.
Sure. Thank you, Steve, and thank you to Future Winchester for hosting this forum. My name is Jennifer Inferna, and I have been a Winchester resident for 16 years. I'm actually originally from suburban Philadelphia, and I moved to Boston after college to pursue a career in biomedical research. Eventually, that turned into a master's degree in public health at Boston University. And I met my husband while working in Boston. We moved to Winchester. We were both working at the time, so we were looking for a close proximity to Boston. We knew this town had great schools and for community values. I have three children, ages eight, 10, and 12. Henry wanted me to note that he is my eight-year-old. Gracie is my 10-year-old, and Tucker is my 12-year-old. And I've been an active part of this community since we've lived here. I am currently on the Board of Health. I was appointed by the majority of the Select Board and the Board of Health in December, and I've been serving for the past two months, and it has been a pleasure. I have been on the Winchester Soccer Club Board for the past four or five years. I am the registrar for the Winchester Soccer Club for the SFC portion of the club. I've been a town soccer coach, a sandlot soccer coach, and an age group coordinator for the Winchester Soccer Club. And I've been part of the Ambrose PTO in various positions for longer than I can remember.
That's great, Jen. You're very active in the community, as we can see. You can't tell, but I'm smiling because I like that answer. Lauren, let's turn to you next, please, and let's hear a little bit about your background.
Great, thank you. And thank you all for being here, and thank you to Future Winchester. My name is Lauren Costello. I've been a Winchester resident for 27 years. I was born and raised in Nagata, Connecticut, and I still have family and friends there. My husband and I have owned and operated Costello Funeral Home in Winchester for 20 years, and it was his family business since 1961. We have two kids, both born in Winchester Hospital and educated in the Winchester school system. They are aged 22 and 20. I'm a member in good standing of many clubs and community organizations in town in which I am interested, engaged, and a valued member, including Winchester Town Meeting, Precinct 3. I've been a member for 17 years. I've been a member of the Winchester Town Meeting Committee on Rules, the Winchester Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, the Wildwood Cemetery Advisory Committee, the ANCA Society. I've been a member for 15 years, and I just want to let you know the ANCA Fair is on this year. It is May 20th and 21st. And the Winton Club for 15 years, the Winchester League of Women Voters for about 15 years. And I served on the Massachusetts Funeral Directors Association Board of Directors. I love Winchester and Winchester Center, the beauty and the vibrancy of it, but what makes Winchester so appealing is the people. They're always at the ready to help in any situation. As a funeral director, I have worked closely with the Boards of Health in many towns in the Commonwealth over the course of my 27-year career, and I'm familiar with their responsibilities. I have also worked statewide with the health departments and town clerks across the Commonwealth in my daily work activities, but also voluntarily helped to implement and upgrade the recently-launched VIP electronic death certificate registration system that is currently in use in Massachusetts. And to do that, attended many statewide meetings with health directors and town clerks to fine-tune the administrative portions and use of the program, and also called upon our local and state legislators to help push it through. I have been called upon as a resource for my familiarity with this program and believe it is evidence that I do my part for the team. I am open-minded, a good listener, and a team player. When I came to Winchester many years ago, I worked long hours in Boston and was not married with children, so I really didn't have many friends. Many people that I met suggested that this club or that one would be a good fit for me, and it was generally true. I've decided that the Board of Health fits my interests, and I hope that you, as the voters, after listening today, will decide that it's a good fit for me too and vote me in. Thank you.
All right, some great responses, and obviously, a couple of candidates that are intimately involved in things that are going on around our community, so thank you for that. We're going to go right back to you, Lauren, for a little bit of your opening statement. Let's hear from you. What makes you qualified? We heard a little bit of that. Why should people vote for you to put you on the Board of Health?
Let me see. Just gonna look. Ooh, I gotta look at my nail. Because I'm known as a committed professional, responsible, and dedicated volunteer and citizen. As a town meeting member, I have been dedicated and committed to consistent attendance at town meeting, fairly representing the members of the Winchester community through many hard decisions, through many project and budget decisions, without any personal agenda or preconceived opinion. Again, I am open-minded and a good listener. I'm also proud to say that one time when I was checking in at town meeting, one of the clerks noticed that I had a long record of perfect attendance. I have missed a few meetings since, but it's still my commitment. I also bring the funny. I'm a happy person. I have a lot of fun and a self-deprecating sense of humor. Professionally, I work with grieving families. Families are not always nuclear. With two parents who are happily married and live in the same place forever and ever, and people don't always get along. I pride myself on my ability to navigate delicate situations and guide people down a path where they make compromises to inevitably agree. It's never a perfect science, and somebody always throws us a curve, but we always get to where we need to be. I live a life of service, and I am proud of my professional and personal abilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. A great answer there. And let's turn right back to Jennifer. Jennifer, what makes you qualified and why should people vote for you?
Sure. I have about 20 years of experience in public health and healthcare in both the public sector and in the private sector. I have worked at the Massachusetts Department of Public Health in infectious diseases. I have worked at the Massachusetts State House for the Joint Committee on Public Health, where I researched, analyzed, and drafted public health laws and legislation for the entire state of Massachusetts. And I have worked at the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, where I helped implement the Affordable Care Act throughout the six New England states. On the private side, I've held multiple leadership roles at Mass General Brigham. I've worked in operations as the chief of staff to the chief operating officer at Partners Healthcare. It was Tom Glenn, prior to him becoming CEO at Massport. I have worked at finance. I negotiated contracts with all the health insurance payers on behalf of Mass General Brigham and its hospitals and physician organizations. And I also worked in government relations, tracking healthcare policy related to hospitals throughout the state. These experiences, I think I can leverage and will bring a lot of support and strength and perspective to the Board of Health. In terms of government, I've now had the opportunity to work at all levels of government. They're definitely different between the state and the local and the federal, but there are similarities. In terms of my other positions in policy and in contract negotiations, you have to be able to filter and sift through information, ask the right questions, pull out what's important, collaborate with others to solve problems. And these skills, I think, will be important for the Board of Health. And just a public service announcement, you know, it's not easy to find the time to volunteer and step up and take on one of these roles, but I think it's very, very important. You know, I have young children. I've had a career, still working on that. Lauren owns a business in town, and it's still important, no matter how much time you can spend, to really take what you can to contribute back to your town, because it's going to be us that will decide, I think, where the future of Winchester is going. But very simply, issues in terms of my vision and what I'd like to work on, and fortunate enough to continue on serving the Board of Health, I think we need to take an evidence-based approach to determining what priorities our town health department and Board of Health will be working on. I think there needs to be more collaboration across boards, across the Select Board and the School Committee and with town meeting members. And finally, mental health. We've all seen it. We're hopefully all going to be talking about it even more, but developing a long-term strategy and plan for more infrastructure and more resources for mental health. And frankly, as we look forward to recovery from COVID-19, I think it's going to be more important than ever, as the issues that the Board of Health takes on become more complex, to take a proactive approach to planning for public health and well-being for Winchester.
Wow. Thank you for both those responses and for making me feel a little bit like an underachiever. You've got some very full plates over there, and I commend you both. We're going to work our way into the debate questions now. And of course, the main topic everyone wants to hear about, and there's been a lot of activity lately, is about masks. So we know recently the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education decided to roll back mask mandates for schools as of February 28th. We know just yesterday, our own school committee voted to transition to optional masking under the implementation through the superintendent's office. And we know that the State Department of Public Health Advisory now suggests that only immunocompromised individuals and other factors, underlying factors, who are fully vaccinated, wear masks indoors. So we are coming out of this pandemic. We're starting to see the change take place. So what's your take on these developments? Do you believe this is the right time to lift masks in schools and in indoor facilities in town? We're going to turn to you, Jennifer, for the first response.
Sure. I mean, I think we can all say that as we've seen through the pandemic, there are no simple answers to complex questions. Information and data has continued to change. The recommendations from state and federal health authorities is constantly changing. So when we're making these decisions, these important decisions about masking or otherwise, we need to take into consideration what's happening at this time, where we are at at the moment, and what the science is. So if we're looking at that today with COVID-19, we can say that COVID-19 is not causing serious illness and hospitalizations in vaccinated individuals who don't have any other underlying issues. This should be the new standard for assessing the risk in our communities, not just case rates and the number of people that have COVID. So if we're using that to assess the risk profile of a community, we can look at Winchester and we can say our vaccination rates are very high, higher than many other towns in the Commonwealth. We have access to vaccines and boosters through our own health department. We have access to PCR testing and at-home testing through our own health department. So if you're looking to assess the risk profile of Winchester as a community, I would say that it's fairly low compared to other towns in the Commonwealth. So yes, I agree with the Massachusetts Department of Public Health and their recent movement from requiring masking indoors for vaccinated individuals. And I absolutely agree with the Department of Education, Elementary and Secondary Education, in making masks optional for children in schools. And just this morning, I am proud to say that the Board of Health of Winchester voted unanimously to rescind our mask mandate for Winchester, and that will be effective on Monday, this Monday, February 21st.
That's great news. That's great news. Thank you for that response, Jennifer. And I just want to remind the viewers that Jennifer and Lauren are not running against each other. They are running for two separate seats, so these two eminently qualified individuals could end up on the Board of Health together. Lauren, your response, please.
Thank you. This is absolutely the right time to reverse the mask mandate. The medical data is there to support this decision. I viewed the recent Board of Health and School Committee and Subcommittee Zoom meetings, and I also agree with the School Committee that it comes down to personal choice and personal responsibility. We live in a very educated community, and I think the choices will be responsible. Of course, if somebody feels uncomfortable with that, they have the prerogative to continue to mask or to stay away from certain facilities. I know that there were a lot of concern about the return from vacation that will happen and what will happen with transmission, but again, the data is there. Last year, there was a slight uptick after February vacation. This year, vaccination rates are up. There is much more testing available, and the town of Winchester is prepared with more PCR testing and home testing kits available. So yes, the time is right.
Great, thank you. So I'm going to go off on a little bit of a tangent here, a little bit of a curveball, but at-home testing seemed to be something that came onto the scene just relatively recently. Personally, I thought that was a great tool. It's a great tool to have in people's hands so they can test at home. They can self-isolate, and they can mitigate some of that spread. Lauren, what do you think about the introduction and the emergence of rapid antigen testing for people at home?
I think it's excellent. I think it also negates some of the insecurity that we have surrounding this disease, where, you know, we think that we might be infected, and we get to know immediately that we're okay and that we're not going to expose our elders or the immunocompromised and that type of thing. So of course, there was a frenzy surrounding the initial release of these at-home tests, but they are valid and valuable.
Great, thank you. Jen, anything to add to that?
I agree with all those sentiments, Lauren. I mean, I would add that our health department did everything they could. They purchased antigen tests at cost from the state and have been distributing them at vaccine clinics and for others that need them. Agree with Lauren that they really have given people kind of immediate knowledge. I would just, of whether or not they're infected, I would just add that having been an at-home user of antigen tests, you can get a different test result in 24 hours or sometimes in 16 hours. So I would encourage, if you have tests, to continue testing over the course of, if you're not feeling well.
Great, thank you for that. So as we know, for the past two years, kids have had to deal with some pretty wild dynamics. Having to wear masks, staying isolated from their friends and family, and missing out on a lot of the extracurricular activities that are associated with being a kid, like birthday parties, clubs at school, and of course, youth sports. What are your plans going forward to help repair and support students' mental health? We're going to start with Lauren.
Thank you. I don't have small children in the school system, but I do have college-age children who, when they went to college in 2020 and their first semester, and they came home for spring break and had anticipated going on a trip on spring break, and that didn't happen, and then they never went back to school. That was hard. And to start to Zoom, whether you're a school-age child or a high school child or a college-age person, it's very, very difficult and challenging. And all the expectations that they have for the school year, like especially as a college student, everything that they had anticipated doing was wrong. Everywhere that they had anticipated going, they were not allowed to go. So the struggle is real, and I'm very thankful and was somewhat frightened to think about the parents who, you know, who were working parents or who had to put small children on Zoom and had to learn to do that, and the teachers. So clearly, there's a lot at stake here. Now, I also think that there's a mental health crisis going on. It's very, very concerning. And that's one of the things that I have on all these papers spread out here is that that's something we need to pay closer attention to. Here in Winchester, we have the Coalition for a Safer Community, which addresses mental health issues and substance abuse, but we need more funding for that. We need to be a little more proactive. And right now, of course, with the pandemic, we're being reactive. You know, they had started going down that road, and these illnesses, there's a stigma associated with them, and they suffer in silence. And I think we in Winchester, as an educated community, should really pay more attention to that, fund it, and be progressive.
Great answer. Thank you for that. And Jennifer, over to you. What are your plans, again, going forward to help repair and support students' mental health? And we know everyone's talking about this, and what are your thoughts on that?
I would just say that, you know, as I mentioned, I think that the role of the Board of Health is going to continue to evolve and expand and get into more complex issues. So, you know, specifically, students' health might fall under our school committee's purview, and I think that there is going to be times when we really have to collaborate with our school committee and really coordinate efforts. Lauren mentioned the Coalition for a Safer Community. They do, the Coalition does a lot of that collaboration across the town and the schools, which is very, very important. I think we need to raise awareness and talk about the issues of mental health with children. I think we need to address the stigma, which often prevents people from talking about how they feel, from asking for help. And I think that earlier that we can introduce that, obviously, the town's opportunity to do that is probably through the schools. So again, collaborating with our school committee and school administration, I think, will be imperative to making any meaningful progress in addressing student health and well-being. But, you know, reducing stigma and getting people to talk about it and increasing awareness, I think are the first steps to making people feel comfortable about asking for help.
Great. I think kids are open to these discussions. I see in some of my kids and their friend groups, they are talking about some of this stuff already. So I think they're ahead of the game from a generation-to-generation standpoint, but there's obviously more that can be done. Thank you for those answers. And I think we've addressed the elephant in the room, COVID-19, and the subsequent policies that have gone along with that. So let's move on to something, move on to some different ground now. Let's talk a little bit about what I like to call working in the trenches or the blocking and tackling that comes with working with any organization, especially in government. A critical component of being successful is being able to work with others, build consensus, and find compromise. Please describe your general approach to working with others in a team setting and maybe provide an example of your ability to work collaboratively to achieve a positive outcome or how you may have resolved differences between people with differing opinions. And I'll let you take that on first, Jennifer.
Sure. I'd say foremost and most importantly, you need to be honest. In order to, you have to demonstrate honesty in order to gain people's trust. And then even if you do disagree, they will at least respect that you're being honest and that you have a sincere point of view. I think you need to approach situations being ready to collaborate and being able to work as a team. You have to be able to compromise and have an open mind and be flexible and listen to other people's ideas. In just about all of my jobs that I've had over the course of my career, I have been required to work as part of a team and collaborate. And I think I have demonstrated that I can build strong relationships, and I think this is one of the reasons why I have been successful. I also think that establishing a common goal that a team can work towards. You know, it doesn't necessarily matter if you get there with a straight line. If you all have a common goal, you can work out that path together. And if you're working with people who are honest, who are willing to collaborate and are willing to compromise, I think that's the best way that we can achieve success. In terms of a specific example, I started my own healthcare consulting company a few years ago, and I work with hospitals right now, essentially to work with some of their teams to work on developing business plans and creating more efficiency in their operations. And I essentially come into, probably like you do, Lauren, as being a funeral director, into a room of people that I've never met before, and I have to listen to them and understand what their knowledge is and develop a trusting relationship with them and come up with a bunch of different options. Again, we might have a common goal, but there might be different ways to get there that works better for the organization or the people that you're working with.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. And now over to you, Lauren. Same question. Again, describe your general approach to working with others in a team setting and maybe provide a couple examples of, of the ability to work collaboratively and achieve a positive outcome.
Excellent. Well, anybody who works with me or is friends with me knows that what you see is what you get. I don't have a hidden agenda. I'm an honest person and an open book, and I never ask anybody to do something that I wouldn't do myself or that I haven't done. I'm a doer. I always do more than my share, put in the time, and I always try to make myself available to help. I live a life of service. Now professionally, as far as problem solving, you know, as a funeral director, nobody wants to hear about that, and I'm not going to share that. It, it presents itself a, a whole different strain of problems, you know, working with bereaved people, working with grieving people. Again, you know, there, this, whenever you mention that, it always reaches someone at a difficult time. They may have lost somebody or they're taking care of somebody that's sick, so I'm not going to go down that road. But as far as problem solving and working collaborative, collaborative, collaboratively to achieve a common goal, as a member of the ANCA Society, as a member of the Wynton Club Holiday Gift Fair, and as a, and as part of the Wynton Cabaret, the three largest fundraisers of the clubs in town, that, you know, the, the ANCA Fair happens the third weekend in May every year, and it's a lot of teamwork and it's a lot of moving parts, and then you throw weather into it, and it rains. And we all have that common goal to make money that goes into a big pot to give back to the community in the form of gifts and grants. There's a lot of moving parts, there's a lot of personalities, there's so many things that happen. And again, I just think it's my happy-go-lucky personality that I bring to the table. Again, I bring the funny, I'm a hard worker, and I love people. I love all people, and, and that's how it works, and it's as easy as that.
Great answer, and thank you and the rest of the ANCA Society for continuing with that wonderful tradition enjoyed by my entire family and everyone else around town. I know that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, let's look ahead a little bit. What are the issues you would like to focus on? What are the most pressing issues facing Winchester as a member of the Board of Health beyond sort of the COVID-19 response? Lauren, why don't you take a stab at that?
Again, it's the mental health and the substance abuse. I'm going to revisit that. These are issues that nobody talks about, and they're very, very real, and they're happening in our community, and they're getting worse and worse. And we can't just shove them under the rug. We have to address them. And as a Board of Health, it seems, it's something quite large to fall under our umbrella. And, you know, even the Coalition for a Safer Community, as good as they are, as good as Dot Butler is in bringing to the table what she brings all the time and giving to families what she can give, we need more than that. We need to address the elephant in the room, and I want to be a part of that.
Great. What, and Jennifer, let's turn over to you now for a response there. What are the issues?
Yeah, I, I agree with Lauren, and, and it's great to hear that we have some of the same goals as well. Addressing mental health that's been exacerbated by the pandemic is definitely number one. As Lauren mentioned, there is a lot already going on in this town, but I think looking at where the gaps are and where the opportunities are so that we can appropriately allocate resources is very important. I, I also wonder if we need to review the Winchester Code of Bylaws specifically to determine, the Board of Health doesn't have a specific chapter, and as these issues are getting more complex and as we're having to address larger-scale issues, I wonder if something like that might add a little bit more structure to the roles and responsibility of the Board of Health in our town.
Great, thank you. And let's, let me just once again remind everyone that Lauren and Jennifer, they're running for two separate positions. They're not running against each other. There's a, a three-year term and a one-year term. I just want to make sure that's perfectly clear. Looking at the response, the town's response to COVID-19, what lessons do you think we've learned about the role of the Board of Health? Jennifer?
Well, I think communication is key. It's so important, and it doesn't happen overnight. Our town health department has been working so hard, and they have been taking in so much information from the Department of Public Health that they have then had to translate for our residents. And that takes time and that takes resources. So as I, as I was previously mentioning, as the role of the Board is evolving, I would start to look at how our town health department is structured and is it adequately resourced the way it is now, considering that there's going to be more complex issues like mental health that we're going to need to tackle.
Great, thank you. And Lauren, lessons learned here?
Thanks. It's a pretty positive lesson. I've learned that our health department is qualified. Jennifer Murphy and the Board were efficient in gathering and dispersing the information to the community. They were good at holding regular meetings, educating and responding to the community concerns, and of course, still holding vaccination clinics. And this is just a brief summary of the myriad of duties that they're responsible for, as well as working collaboratively with the schools. Are they perfect? And was everything delivered to everyone's satisfaction? No. It is a work in progress, and everything is based on data. You know, it's so hard when, when the children, you know, we can't change a mask mandate because you're tired of it or because it's hard. And we, we, I don't want to say we, I'm not a member of the Board of Health, but I'm sure that they feel for you, and I'm sure that was a slippery slope to go down, and I'm sure that those decisions were difficult. But again, it was a work in progress, and it was based on data, and I'm very proud of the, the position that they took.
Great, thank you for that. What has been working well with the current Board of Health? I know a lot has. Can you pick out a few things? And then how would you, do you see any room for improvement and, and where would those areas be? Lauren, let's start with you.
Let me see. Again, I don't want to go, keep going back to the mental health and substance abuse. Some of the things that I think that they, they do really well, and they have always done really well, are the vaccination clinics. And again, getting the information and the data. Many, many years ago, when the swine flu came through, and it was a big thing, and my daughter was quite young, and she was little, and in a matter of a week, she lost half of her body weight, and they were still trying to figure it out, and I happened to go into the Board of Health, and Kathy Whitaker was the nurse at that time, and we just talked about things, and I said, oh geez, and she's like, that's it, that's it. And knowledge is power, and education is key. And they're always on the cutting edge of getting those vaccines and making them available to our residents, and I'm very proud of that.
Great, thank you. We're going to even tread on some new ground. We're going to talk a little bit about the relationship between the environment and public health. So very simply, Lauren, what in your mind is the relationship between the environment and public health for us here in Winchester?
Well, that's quite a large umbrella, you know, and the environment and public health. It's a lot to fall under one small umbrella in a small, little town. I think the Board of Health and the Sustainability Director have some overlapping missions, you know, and the environmental concerns are clearly the main priority of the Sustainability Director. The Board of Health has contributed to putting some major programs in place, including the flood mitigation program, the fish ladder for the herring at the dam downtown, but their attention to the immediate public health and illness issues should take precedence over environmental concerns. There has to be some kind of a division. I mean, there will be a give and take, but there does have to be some kind of division. I'm very glad that we do have a sustainable, Sustainability Director, and we do have a Climate Action Plan that should be in place, and they're working on that, but I think we're in a good place. We're moving forward.
Great, thank you. And I know this is a wide-open question, so I apologize for not having a more narrow focus, but again, Jen, for you, the relationship between the environment and, and public health?
Certainly, environmental health falls under the purview of the, the Board of Health. It's part of the mission, and there are factors that definitely contribute to health and wellness for people in our community related to environmental health. The, the Climate Action Plan, that committee actually, I was surprised to see that the committee actually is an advisory committee to the Select Board. So I would like to see that in the future be an advisory committee to the Board of Health also, since the environment also actually falls under the purview of the Board of Health. I think it's in one area of many areas that the Board of Health needs to figure out how to prioritize amongst the various issues that we need to address. There are limited resources, as we all know, available, and the environment is just one of them. So I know our community has been working a lot and has robust plans with the 2020 Climate Action Plan, and that's fantastic. And I, my, my opponent, who unfortunately is not here tonight, is, is laser-focused on that climate issue. I would say it's an important step to use, take an evidence-based approach to really deciding how much resources we should put into the various public health issues. The Winchester Community Hospital is required to do a community health needs assessment every couple of years, as well as other hospitals in the area, and they take data from residents to hear what the residents think are the important issues that they need to address. So I would put the environment in terms of priority in a list, and I would want the residents to speak about what they feel the Board of Health and the town health department need to prioritize moving forward.
Great, thank you. And you read my mind a little bit. I was going there for sort of the part two of the question of where in the budget would you prioritize environmental concerns with respect to other Board of Health concerns in the town-wide budget? Knowing we have a finite number of resources, knowing we don't have just a blank check to write, how do you, how do you prioritize that, Jen?
Well, I, I do think, and I, I, my understanding is that town meeting makes a lot of those decisions about how to allocate our town funds, so obviously, working directly with them to determine what priorities there are. But as I said, there are a myriad of public health issues that all need to be considered very carefully, and I would use reports like the Winchester Hospital Community Health Needs Assessment, which are evidence-based. They use surveys from residents, they use focus groups, they use interviews with key leaders in communities, as well as publicly available state and federal data to really figure out what the issues are that the residents say are part of their needs in terms of promoting good health and wellness. So I think it's a process. I don't think I could say exactly where it falls. I would have to go and look at the data and, and hear what our residents have to say, and certainly would want to be working on the priorities that our residents think are most important.
Thank you. Thank you for that answer. And, and back to you now, Lauren, with the same thing, and it's a little bit of an extension. You may have answered some of the question already, but a little bit of an extension, when it comes in the, you know, to the budget, where would you prioritize environmental concerns with respect to other Board of Health concerns?
I would say, you know, the attention to the immediate public health and illness issues should take precedence over many of the environmental concerns, and people aren't going to like hearing that, but that's not to say that environmental concerns don't cause illness. The, the Board of Health has clearly been a crucial department and funded in the budget long before we became educated about environmental concerns. Now, having said that, the budget is always tight. Everybody always has their hands out. Everybody always wants more. I think for sustainability and for environmental concerns, there's a little more access to grants, and we should really look upon some grant writing and grant requesting to get the monies for those projects. And I don't want to negate them and say that they're not important, but they are not as important as the immediate public health.
Thank you. Thank you both for handling that, that, that was probably the most difficult question, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but these are important topics to cover, and then you, you both answered those questions very well. We're nearing the end of our program, so let me start with some thank yous again, and then we can open up for some closing thoughts by each of the candidates. But again, I want to thank Lauren Costello, who is running for the one-year term for the Board of Health. I want to thank Jennifer Inferno, who's running for the three-year term for the Board of Health, for their time tonight. I hope you've had as much fun as I have. It's been a great experience. I want to thank Future Winchester again, and thank again the team here at WinCam. We very much appreciate this opportunity in the first-ever candidate forum sponsored by Future Winchester. We hope there's many to follow. Thanks again to the wonderful team here at WinCam again. So let me give you each another minute or two to close things out and sort of wrap things up. I know you had a chance to do this, but any closing thoughts for you, Lauren?
Just a little thank you. Thank you for having me. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to shed some light on how I feel about certain issues. And at the end of the day, what I hope that you have seen here is that I'm your person. If you want anybody that's going to go to bat for you, it's me. I'm going to give you the time, I'm going to take your business, so please vote for me for the one-year term for the Board of Health. Thank you.
Great close. Okay, Jennifer, you're your opportunity now.
Yes, thank you, Steve. I just wanted to thank you and Future Winchester for having us here tonight. It has been fun, and I've enjoyed being up here with Lauren. I asked for your vote on March 19th. I have a track record of success in my professional career, and I look forward to leveraging all of that experience to continuing to serve on the Board of Health. Again, I was appointed to the Board of Health in December by a majority of the Select Board and the Board of Health members, and it has been an honor to serve you all. There's, it hasn't been easy, and I am still learning a lot, and that is really part of the fun, and, and I'm enjoying it a lot. So just wanted to say briefly that the election this year is on a Saturday. March 19th is a Saturday. That's a little bit different. I know I'm going to be here. Lauren, are you going to be here?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, but if you're not going to be here, you could get out your calendar right now and check to see if your family is going to be here on March 19th. And if you're not, there are absentee ballots available. You can fill out an absentee application. That's actually, it's, it's posted on the Winchester Town website, and you can fill that out, give it to the clerk, and you can get an absentee ballot. So please, whether you're here or not, make sure you vote on March 19th.
Thank you very much. You, you took the last line from me, but thank you. You probably said it a little more eloquently than I would. We do want to remind everyone that the election is on March 19th. That's a Saturday. Everyone's going to Winchester High School. Absentee ballots are available, so let's get that, those turnout numbers up. Again, thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Lauren. Viewers, stay with us while we make a quick change to the set, and we're going to be coming back with another forum with a candidate for the planning board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Friends, neighbors, and fellow Winchester residents, and welcome to part two of the very first candidate forum sponsored by Future Winchester. My name is Steve Boxansky and I will continue to be your host for tonight's discussion. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the folks at Future Winchester for giving me this opportunity. I would like to thank the residents who helped us compile a set of questions for these candidate forums. And finally, I would like to thank the WinCam team for all their cooperation, assistance, and patience as we embarked on this new endeavor. They really are the last bastion of local news and we're very grateful to have this opportunity. Let me talk a little bit about Future Winchester for a second. Future Winchester is a nonpartisan, not-for-profit organization that was established to promote awareness in Winchester's town government and encourage greater civic engagement. Future Winchester does not support or oppose any candidates for elected office, but is focused on the issues and decisions being made that will impact our town now and in the future. For more information, please visit their website at www.futurewinchester.com. In keeping with this mission, we believe that more forums, public participation, and open dialogue are to the benefit of all our residents. And we're not trying to compete with other groups that hold similar forums. We want to complement these existing and valued traditions and provide a new voice. Simply, Future Winchester believes more is better when it comes to informing our friends and neighbors, and we hope to bring a unique perspective with this experience. We have sought out and received lots of feedback from members of the community and putting together a robust list of questions, and I'd like to thank those individuals. I also want to let everyone know that all candidates were invited to participate in tonight's discussion. For this forum, we have the pleasure and honor of speaking with one of the two candidates for the planning board. The planning board consists of five members who serve three-year terms. The general purpose of the planning board is to provide direction and guidance for the orderly growth and development of the community. While the planning board may not be a part of town government that many are familiar with, they play a critical role in how everyday life is lived. From new commercial and residential developments to bike paths, to open spaces and a vibrant downtown, the planning board must consider all these factors as they try to realize the community's vision for what their town looks like and how it operates. Tonight, I'm joined by Philip Fratteroli, who is a first-time townwide candidate for office, but who has a long history in the town. Welcome Phil and thank you for your participation.
Thank you for having me Steve and thank you to Future Winchester and to WinCam for hosting us.
Okay. Let me set the table a little bit and remind everyone that tonight's forum is a channel for greater awareness, engagement, and education. As we did with the previous candidates, we'd like to open up the discussion with you telling people of Winchester a little bit about yourself and providing a snapshot of your connection to Winchester. We'll then give you an opportunity to lay out your rationale for running for the planning board, and then we'll dive into some detailed questions. But first of all, Phil, take it away and introduce yourself to the rest of the community.
Sure. Thanks again for having me. So my name is Philip Fratteroli. I am, I guess I'm not a lifetime resident of Winchester, but we moved here when I was three years old. My family, Felipe was my dad and Anna, opened Lucia's in downtown Winchester in 1985. And I grew up here in town. I went to the high school. I took TV studio class in this in the in this, not this facility, but one very much like it. And I was just thinking on the way here, all the technology that we used back then is completely obsolete and now I can do stuff on my phone that we couldn't even do in that big studio in the high school. So as I said, I went to high school here. I went to Boston College for undergrad and Suffolk University Law School for law school. And despite being when I was a high school student here, I did not want to go into the restaurant business, but despite that plan, I ended up in the restaurant business. In my last year of law school, I opened Ducali Pizzeria on the North End and have opened a couple of other restaurants in Boston and recently became about five years ago became co-owner of Lucia's back in Winchester Center. As I said, I went to law school, practiced law mostly around real estate and business formation, liquor licenses, things like that. I have had the experience of building a building. We the building that our restaurant in East Boston is was developed by us. It's a mixed-use building with a restaurant on the first floor, yoga studio and residential above it. So I have a little bit of experience going through the zoning and and planning process as a petitioner. I also was for three years the president of the North End Neighborhood Council. So we overheard as the neighborhood group, we were the first kind of line in the zoning process for the North End and the city of Boston. And that was a great experience. It kind of tied into my, you know, my experience as a law student and also as a business owner because I think both of those knowledge bases and kind of ways of thinking are beneficial and kind of looking at the future of a community, what we need, what what businesses need to survive and businesses are an important part of creating, you know, a tax basis for a community to be able to afford the things that they want. So that's a little bit about my background.
Thank you Phil. And that is a it's a varied background. And it seems one, you've got the business here in Winchester, so you see things firsthand about how town government is operating, how it impacts you as a local business owner and operator.
Sure.
But you also have the law degree, so you see things from that side as well. You also have some experience working in the North End, which is, I would assume, very different from Winchester. Can you talk a little bit about the differences between those two communities and then we'll get into your platform?
So I mean, as everybody is familiar with the North End, it's a very dense, very urban neighborhood. You know, the issues that we face there with things like stormwater runoff are much more severe, especially in the North End. It's it's built on pile piles. So the rainwater is really an important part of keeping the neighborhood from crumbling into the ocean. And the other thing I forgot to mention is one of the reasons we moved, I came back to Winchester five years ago was I'm a father. I'm a father of three young girls who are not yet in the public school system, but will be starting next year. So all those things, I think, kind of give me a well-rounded view of the town, what we are good at, what we could use help with, and what we need for the future so that hopefully my my children decide to come back when they're when they're all grown up as well.
That sounds great and good luck to those three little girls of yours. Thanks for sharing that background, Phil. Now let's transition a little bit. Let's move more into sort of the platform. Why are you running for the planning board and why should people vote for you? What qualifications do you have that make you a good candidate for this position?
Well, one of the reasons I decided to run was as a town meeting member, I've been in town meeting for a year now. And I couldn't, I couldn't, I don't think I understood prior to that how much power that the the planning board has, how much how much they've grown to encompass over the last maybe 20 years. So so that was one thing. And then in viewing the planning board as a member of town meeting and the way they they operate and things, it seemed to me that a perspective of a business owner, a perspective as a young parent, might be one that was valuable in those discussions. The other thing I noticed is that only one out of the last like 13 elections for planning board has been contested. So most of the people who are serving on the planning board and they're all, you know, using their their time as volunteers to serve the community, but none of them speak with the authority of somebody who's run townwide and in a contested election. And I think that's an important, it's an important bona fide to to be able to wield the power that the the planning board is and considering the impact that it has on people's lives.
Thank you Phil for that explanation and for that. Thank you, Phil, for that explanation and for that rationale. Very good.
Thank you.
So you bring an important voice, and you answered some of this already, but you bring an important voice and perspective to the table as a business owner in our downtown, in our center, and someone whose livelihood depends on a vibrant and flourishing downtown. In your opinion, does Winchester have a business-friendly environment? And what can we do better to make sure people are willing to make an investment in our downtown?
Well, in reflecting on my experience in Winchester over the last couple weeks and deciding to run for the planning board, it struck me how much the town hasn't changed and how development, particularly mixed-use development, smart development, transit-oriented development, hasn't really taken place in Winchester. And asking around to various people who serve on boards and are appointed to boards, the sense that I got is that it's become a very obstructionist system here. And part of that is the planning board. The planning board has a role that it should have in planning, but it seems to me that they're not doing a lot of planning. They've, there's been a mission creep, if you will. They've taken on more responsibilities in other ways. They've taken on more staff. But when it comes to the issues of planning, it seems that the preference is that they stop things from happening than instead of wanting things to happen and pushing the town for it. So that's one of the reasons I think new perspective might be good. And one, like I said, like if we're looking for commercial tenants to want to come into, say, North Main Street or downtown, I can lend a perspective on what prospective businesses are looking for. And I think that's an important part of the discussion.
Absolutely. We agree with that. And so let's expand on that a little bit. What are some of the challenges that businesses downtown or just in the greater Winchester community? What are some of the challenges that businesses are facing?
Well, it's, I'd say the permitting process and zoning reflects on permits a lot. I mean, it's the same thing that people are facing, just regular citizens are facing, when they want to do a modest renovation to their house. The kind of playbook right now in Winchester, if you want to get a small variance or something like that, is just to try to avoid having to get a variance altogether and just trying to do things by right, which causes a whole nother set of issues. If you're just doing things by right, there is not as much input from the town. You're probably building something you don't necessarily would have designed that way. And it forces people, you know, to kind of have to go around the back way to get anything done. If we had a system that was working, you could ask for the variance, and it wouldn't take multiple years and cost, you know, cost thousands of dollars in legal fees and things like that. And people would be able to have modest renovations, and the system would work. The building department's backed up. They're asking for the planning board to adopt certain regulations according to state recommendations. And it seems like the planning board is deciding not to because they want, they want that obstruction in a well-flowing system. And as a business person, you want regular, you want dependability. You want to be able to know that the system is working, that you're going to get a fair hearing. And sadly, I don't think that's the case right now.
Thank you for that, Phil. So in our research for tonight's forum, we looked at some of the documents that we found through the Town of Winchester website. We looked at the master plan and some of the other things. One of the things that caught my eye was a phrase from the Rules and Regulations Governing the Subdivision of Land in Town, which is the Master Plan Rules and Regulations. But I'm going to make this, I'm going to state this quote here and then let you react to it. So, quote, "Winchester is a mature suburban community with a rich history and identity as a beautiful town with an excellent quality of life. The board, by adoption of these regulations, wishes to guide Winchester's redevelopment and growth to preserve and protect the assets that contribute to the town's character." So that sounds great. Are we doing that? And in your opinion, are we keeping our word on this promise?
Well, I mean, you're right. There's words in there that sound beautiful. Rich history and, you know, historic assets and things like that. But part of living in a town is that it has to be a living town. It has to, you know, evolve and keep up with the times. Of course, we want to protect our historical buildings and the character of the town. We also need to make sure that resources are there for residents who live in the town and future residents of the town, particularly a commercial tax basis for Winchester. I mean, we're not as fortunate as Burlington and Woburn to have big commercial sex. And we need to make sure that what we do have is being smartly developed in a way that's sustainable for residents and also creating, you know, opportunities for commercial tax revenue. So I just, I'd say, I'd say that the planning board isn't living up to its own mission in that sense.
And it sounds like commercial development is a big part of the puzzle to get things or keep things able to evolve, but you have to do that in a certain balance of protecting and preserving the assets that we have. So how do we do that?
By planning, by having a conversation. I don't have all the answers for what Winchester needs, but I think it should be a part of a conversation. I think that, and that's what the planning board should be doing. We should be, instead of the idea of preserving Winchester as if it's a piece in, a mummy in a museum, we should be planning for the future and trying to see around the corner for what we need, what the residents of the town are going to need in the next 50 years.
Sounds like planning to me. Thank you, Phil, yeah. All right, so when you think about the planning board, again, I think most residents tend not to think about the planning board. But when you think of the planning board, what would you say are the core functions of the planning board in achieving some of the goals that you talked about? And are we meeting those goals?
Well, one is definitely the kind of being the keepers of the zoning code. And as I said earlier, I think there's been instances where they have chose not to update the zoning code according to what Massachusetts has suggested. I think the other thing is these subdivisions that kind of have come up in the business center, the Center Business District is one of them, where they're almost like designing certain projects that are on the docket. And that's not really a role that they should have. And we have a design review board. We have a historical commission. The planning board shouldn't be picking up shingles on a particular project. I think that's an overreach. The other thing that's been an overreach, in my opinion, is using their role as an advisory board to the ZBA to vote up or down on residential projects. And that's completely like something that the planning board should not be doing. The ZBA has a role. They're the ones who are supposed to be dealing with residential. And all of a sudden, the planning board has started weighing in on all those things. So I think, you know, I think we've kind of gone off track here. And I think, you know, we should spend more time planning and less time kind of judging these small, minor things that other boards have been tasked with.
Thank you, Phil.
If that makes sense.
Yep, sure does. And it's enlightening. So I appreciate this conversation. I'm learning a lot as we go along here, so thanks for being here.
No problem.
If you are fortunate enough to be elected, what would your top priorities include?
I think if I were to be elected, I think it would focus around a new conversation and looking at the master plan and some of the roles that, some of the positions that the planning board has kind of spread into over the last few years and seeing if that's really serving the town and the residents's best interest. I feel like, you know, perhaps there wouldn't be. And I think, you know, extending a conversation to all the parties involved from, you know, people who have been, who have been stopped from doing some renovations and developers who have been, you know, stopped from doing certain projects and different, you know, community groups on what their needs are and what their future needs are, particularly around the schools. I think all those things should be a part of the conversation. And I think the planning board needs to get back to planning.
All right. That sounds like it makes sense to me. So let's talk a little bit. This is a question that I asked the two candidates for Board of Health. I'm going to pose the same to you because when you're part of a team, when you're part of an organization, when you're one of five members, there's a lot that goes into getting people to reach compromise and build that consensus. So tell us a little bit, how, what's your approach? How do you work with others in a team environment? How do you handle conflicts? And if you can give us an example of how you're able to reach common ground with others with whom you may have disagreed, that would be great.
You know, I think it's all part of just a frank discussion and, you know, the understanding and the belief that we're all trying to do best for our neighbors and for the community that we serve. I think, you know, especially in the board in the North End, there's, it's a small neighborhood. There's a lot of competing interests and a lot of personalities. So being on that board was definitely a learning experience on how to deal with those kind of personalities. And I think, you know, like I said, everybody is taking their own personal time, their own free time to serve Winchester. And I think that's the commonality that unites us and will allow any disagreement to be, you know, understood in a different perspective. So I have a great deal of respect. I've been watching a lot of planning board meetings in the last couple weeks and, you know, have a good sense of the personalities and the senses of humor. So I look forward to, if I'm lucky enough to be elected, to those conversations.
All right. So you're ready to jump in with both feet. That sounds great, Phil. We're going to talk a little bit now about some of the things we found in the master plan. In March of 2020, the town's master plan was adopted. The plan is broken up into four categories. And the first is balancing development with preservation. We've talked a little bit about this already. There are several goals within this category that are related to encouraging more commercial, mixed-use, and compact development, supporting existing businesses, and seeking more opportunities in developing housing that is affordable, that allows residents to age within the community, and that is located near local goods and services. How are we doing on meeting this goal or these goals? And what are your thoughts on how the town might pursue such a balance?
Well, I think a big part of the affordability thing goes into what we were talking about before in terms of like a dependable process and faith in the process and the process that it's not going to be overly expensive. Because ultimately, if it's, you know, if it's a delay relating to a zoning issue or renovation or affordable housing or whatever it is, all those costs get passed on to somebody. Ultimately, it's the buyer, the homeowner, you know, whoever the resident is. It's not the contractor who's eating those things. So I think just kind of a reform of the system would be a good way for us to go about reaching some of those goals.
Okay, thanks, Phil. The second category is titled Connecting People to Places. And one of the goals includes advocating for the electrification of the commuter rail system. Is this something you would consider a priority for the planning board?
I think I read a study where the cost of doing something like that would be like close to a billion and a half dollars. And I just don't think this is the time to do that. I think, you know, the public transportation, and I'm a big believer, big supporter of the environment, and I think that's really important. But I feel like public transportation is already a net positive when it comes to the environment. The public transportation right now is in a crisis of usership. I mean, whether it's people who are not commuting anymore to their downtown offices or people who are just afraid to go on public transportation. I mean, we have an issue with that, getting ridership back up. I don't think it's the time to invest a billion and a half dollars on this project. And the other thing, when it comes to all this, especially like the sustainability part, you know, we could be around the corner from a breakthrough in technology that would make that completely irrelevant. You know, whether, you know, to rewire all the commuter rail routes probably is pretty expensive. But maybe electric buses, where you don't have to do that infrastructure work, is a better way to spend that kind of money, and you get more bang for the buck.
Yeah, so just to follow up on that, do you think this, again, is that a priority for the planning board, or is that more of a priority for the MBTA?
Yeah, so that's another issue. That's not really the planning board's charge. So I think, you know, it wouldn't be a priority of mine to make those kind of policy decisions on the planning board.
Okay, thank you, Phil. That second category also suggests increasing the subsidy for school bus service. Do you think that cost is something that's holding parents back from using buses? And does this qualify as a priority for the planning board?
Yeah, I'm not sure why that wouldn't be the purview of the school department or anybody but the planning board. But, you know, I know when we're trying to get my kids off to school, cost is no issue. We would spend, you know, millions of dollars for an extra 10 minutes sometimes. I just don't think, like I said, I don't think that should be the priority. I mean, maybe it's, I just don't even see what the connection is to the planning board. Maybe it's that they're trying to reduce traffic or emissions or who knows what. But that's not what the planning board is supposed to be doing.
Okay. So the third category in that report is ensuring sustainability, something that everyone's talking about. I think that most people agree it is important as we look toward the future, and we want to make sure that we're doing things in a sustainable manner. One of the recommendations is to hire a sustainability director. Town meeting last year approved an article that would have the town seek the ability to add a new tax on renovations and construction. That's a home rule petition that has to go up to the State House, has to be filed and get through the committee and the whole deliberative process and signed by the governor.
Passed by the whole Senate.
So we're not sure when that's going to happen, how it's going to happen, if it's going to happen. This is costing the town roughly and approximately $130,000 annually. So what are your thoughts on that? Is that, it seems like sustainability and planning do go together, but is that the best way to attack it by hiring a sustainability director? And is this a priority for the planning board?
Well, for me, I was on town meeting when that came up, and I voted against this notion of raising the fees for the permits because ultimately, if the purpose is to make the town more sustainable, we want as many people as possible to do modest renovations to their house. And when you renovate your house, and I've done it now twice in Winchester, you're bringing up to higher codes of efficiency when it comes to like, you know, heat loss inside the buildings. The HVAC systems are more efficient, the refrigerators, all the appliances. Everything becomes much more environmentally friendly. So if we're adding fees to already very expensive, one, process, to already very expensive fee system, I just think that we're biting our nose off and despite our face because we should be encouraging people to make their homes more efficient, to make their homes, you know, require less energy and be, you know, better for the environment. I just didn't feel like that was a very smart move. Also, you know, like we've been discussing, should that really be part of what the planning board is advocating? Because I don't think so.
Thank you, Phil. We're going to continue along here and sticking with the master plan. We're in category number three, ensuring sustainability. This category also suggests developing a comprehensive communications plan to provide educational materials on local issues and hiring a new communications and engagement director. I see this plan, and I see a lot of suggestions for hiring more employees for the town. Is this a priority for the planning board, and what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, it just, it comes back to what we've been talking about. It's just, you know, this isn't really what the planning board should be doing. And we live in an age where there's unfathomable access to information and you can watch meetings of the planning board going, and all the public boards going back years and agendas and everything else. I just, I don't see the need to spend money on a communications program in a world where that information's already accessible to the residents, particularly for the planning board. So I would say again that wouldn't be a priority of mine. And I'm not sure why it is of the current boards.
All right. One more for category three, and then we'll move on to the last one. Category three also recommends the town to consider new fees to encourage best practices for storm water management on private properties. So your home and mine, do you agree with this type of approach to force certain behavior of town residents?
I'm going to plead ignorance on this. I don't see the real need... I'm 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 gonna plead ignorance on this. I I don't see the um the real need for this this. Uh I mean, uh when I was in high school, the town flooded and and the high school flooded. And I remember being a a high school student walking through the basement of Lucius and the water was up to our chests. So I I mean, and and I know we've made millions of dollars of investment in our our flood plans and and things like that in the town. I just don't know where the need for this would come. And and especially coming from the North End where the entire neighborhood is impervious substance of surfaces. Whereas in Winchester, there's grass everywhere and, you know, you only can build on a certain part of your your lot. So I I just don't know what the need for that is. Um and would be interested in that conversation. Uh maybe it learns something. But it seems like it's just another barrier uh in the obstructionist kinda kinda role that they've they've taken on.
Well, thanks for your uh honesty in in pleading ignorance. I think that that's okay. And I wanted to say at the beginning, we're not here to put you under too much stress. We're not here to uh catch you in a gotcha moment. We really just wanna have a conversation. I think it's going well so far. So I think honesty is always important when answering questions. And if you don't know, don't try to fake it. Give us a straight.
Sure, I mean, the zoning code is very big and and there's a lot of things I I I'm interested to learn. Obviously, I have an interest in this this kind of stuff and and be interested in learning a lot if I were able to serve on the on the board.
Great. All right, so we made it to the fourth category and final category you'd be happy to to hear. Uh but that that fourth category is building community. And that's something I think everyone can agree on, that building community is important to questions, how do you do it? After reading through the plan, it didn't come as a surprise that the first recommendation was to hire a town, again, communications and engagement coordinator. Um do you think that is hiring another town employee is a sound strategy and should it be a priority?
So building a community, I mean, I think we have, the thing that's drawn everybody who's voting in this election and and everybody who's watching is this is a great community. And we, the things that make this community great aren't, you know, also more uh employees of the town coming in with that task. I mean, I think it's it's impossible to build a community in an unorganic way. And and we're lucky that we have a great community. We need to, you know, defend it and and build on what we have. Um but I I don't see that a government, uh some this kind of hire would would be part of that. I think, you know, it has to be organic, has to be from the residents, has to be from the businesses. Businesses are a great way to build community. I mean, when we built the restaurant in East Boston, the vogue at the time was to build um first-floor garages. And people in the first-floor garage with a with an apartment above just didn't are part of their community. They drive in, they go upstairs, they're not meeting anybody. They, when they go to work, they they drive out of the garage and they leave. But a restaurant, i- if you're sitting at a bar next to somebody, you know, your neighbor that you've never met before, it might be an opportunity to actually talk to them and build a a bond of community, build, you know. One of my favorite memories is uh at Ducali when uh after the bombing, the the marathon bombing, the governor had locked down the entire region, as you know, on that Friday when they were trying to find the the second bomber and then lifted it around six o'clock. And so we opened the restaurant and the restaurant was full of people. Everybody who had been stuck in their apartments in the North End hadn't eaten anything, didn't have any food, all came out. And I was bartending myself because we couldn't get the staff to 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 work it. So um and we had the TVs on. And then, you know, the special report came and they they went right to Watertown and and they showed this um, the capture of of the bomber. And it was like the whole restaurant erupted and it was just like this amazing part, piece of the community, this historic moment, this like thing that had happened to Boston. And to share that with the fifty people who were in the restaurant is something I'll never forget. So I think, you know, instead of spending money on an engagement coordinator, I think we should, you know, encourage more of those kind of organic experiences to happen in the in the town. And um so hopefully, we can do that.
Yeah, when I think of building community in a in Winchester, I think of Town Day.
Yeah.
I think of the Yanka Fair. I think of attending some youth sports events. These are all things that bring people together. How do we do more of that? How do we get more people engaged?
Well, I think I think, you know, these important reforms that I'm talking about, um kind of bringing us uh the planning board back to what its original goals were and and what its original task was, would be a good way to um, I mean, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say that it's gonna solve all the problems that we have in town. But I think, you know, making a a system where the the regulation of of the property in town is more dependable is is gonna make it more affordable for people. I think um ultimately, and it's kinda sad because I I'm the only one of my friends from high school who lives in town. And part of that is that this this breakdown in the in the zoning process and and the inability for for houses to have small renovations has caused, you know, those houses to fall out of of into disrepair. And then ultimately, there's no other choice for but for like a developer to come in, tear it down and start with a a a house, a bigger house. And ultimately, when that happens, it's all about the square footage. So so if if they are tearing down a house, they're making a new house as big as they possibly can. And that's not good for the neighborhood either. So, you know, not only are the prices going up, but like, you know, we're getting an ugly uglier town for it. So I I I just feel like we need to unclog this this obstructionist backlog that we've had in the planning board, get back to the the task at hand, planning for the future of the town. And uh so I wanna be part of that. I feel like I have an important perspective as a business owner. As a second-generation resident, as a father of young kids in the town. And uh and that's, you know, that's why I'm running.
Well, thank you for stepping up and doing that. We, our community, building community, needs leaders. And win or lose, we appreciate the fact that you're jumping into the fray here as as with all the candidates.
Yeah.
We have great respect for all the candidates. We wish a couple more of them were here with us tonight. But anyone that is willing uh to step up and play these important roles, we have a great deal of respect for. Uh so in conclusion, as we're starting to wrap things up, my guess is, again, not many residents are aware of the plan. They're not aware necessarily of the planning board. But I hope our talk tonight helps shed some light on what our planning board is focused on and some of your ideas to to take that to the next level and improve that. Covered a lot of ground here, Phil, uh so I hope it wasn't too tough on you. Uh but it's been a pleasure getting, pleasure getting to know you a little bit, understanding your motivations for running for the planning board. And thanks again for jumping into the fray. I wanna give you just another minute or two to really put your final statement uh out for the night of why people should vote for you.
Okay.
And um what what a Phil Frateroli on the planning board will look and sound like.
So thank you again, Steve. I know this is a lot of work and heavy lift on your part to to get ready for for all the different candidates tonight. And I appreciate all the work that went into this and the whole team here at Future Winchester and at Wind Camp, who, you know, taking the time to do this. Um I would just say that, you know, as as I mentioned, I'm I'm a small business owner in town, a longtime resident and um and a parent to young kids. And I I feel like that those voices aren't being heard right now on the planning board. Um and I want to lend um my efforts into making the town a better place. And I think that that happens when there's a frank discussion on, you know, what what we need, what we don't have, what we could use in the future. And 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 I think I have a a good perspective on that um with those experiences. So I'm asking for everyone's vote. Um on March nineteenth, it's a Saturday election. It's a little bit different than what we're used to in our town elections. Everybody, all the different precincts, will go to the high school to vote instead of the the various elementary schools throughout the town. So I hope to see you outside. I'll probably be outside. I'll I'll probably be using my children shamelessly to to ask for your votes. Um so you can expect to see three cute little girls out there. And um and that's it. I mean, like I said, um, you know, I love this town a lot. That's why I moved back here. And um and that's why I wanna serve on the planning board.
All right, Phil. That's a great answer. And and just like the the previous panelists, you did a great job of letting everyone know, which I thought I was gonna have to do, about uh Saturday, March nineteenth, at Winchester High School. It's one voting place this year. It's a little bit different.
Uh huh.
Um but we encourage all residents to get out and vote, exercise that right of yours, uh fulfill that civile civic obligation. Uh and again, thank you for joining us here tonight. Uh thanks again to the team at Wind Camp for putting on a great show for us. Thanks to the team at Future Winchester. And thank you to all the residents who were able to tune in tonight. Good night.